Thank you for staying. So when Van Kat and Monsur invited me to present and talk about the standard and ontologies in this session, I have asked how long do I have? And of course, they said 20 minutes. So that's a bit tight. But I will just show you in this presentation a few of the problems that we faced in the eTrix project and the tools that we have used so far and the methodology that we have tried to implement in ways to select and choose among the sea of standards that we are actually navigating. But everything stems from a massive pressure for data sharing that is coming from a number of groups. Basically, there is not a week that passes that you have a editorial or a column in a high-profile Impact Factor journal asking for people to share the data. This is Maovinian asking for more transparency about the workflows on variant analysis. This is, and it was in May, and just a month ago in June, Martin Barrow was asking Funder to encourage even further the access to the data. And so basically, it's not only this kind of pressure from the peer we obtained, but it's coming from all sides. If you are funded in the US by NIH, these new policies basically ask you to release the data when obviously this is suited and not protected, but in less than six months for that. So that's putting a very neat pressure on academics and scientists to deliver the data. Of course, if you are operating as an industry and producing drugs, you need to deposit the data and prove of efficacy to the FDA. And the FDA has a strong regime of revision that asks you to submit the data in C-Disk format. So that's again addressing the need for you to share and disclose some of the information in a standard way. And this is where the standards are playing a role. This is the key information of communication. You need to agree upon protocols that allow explicit transfer of information and evidence because this is what is the most important thing. And of course, besides the Funder and the regulatory agencies, you've got now publishers that are also enacting policies. I'm showing now plus one, the policy that has been enacted in March, April 2014 that asks scientists to absolutely disclose the data or put no barrier to the coworkers and scientists to data access. And of course, other journals that follow suit, precursor journals such as GigaScience from BMW Central is a data journal, and Scientific Data is another one that allows you to get credit for your data. So that's again another incentive and mechanism for people to publish data and get credit for it while establishing a new paradigm as well for data publication. And of course, the public, the public is asking for access to data. Maybe you're aware of All Trial Site. This is a site that has been put together by Ben Goldacher in the UK and is famous for many books, Popular Science, Bad Science, and Bad Pharma. And interesting thing is that pharma and publishers are joining this initiative to push and drive the release of information. So as we go about our business, it seems that people are picking very softly, but the stick is getting bigger by the minute, and we will have to disclose this information as much as we can. So from one crisis to the next, you know that you are in trouble if you show up on this track from watch, say. And again, this is essential that people are doing this scrutiny work and forensic science. You'll see BEX that need to establish the good paradigm and infrastructure for releasing information to allow assessment, evaluation, and review. And it was so actually highly visible that even The New York Times made a headline about two weeks ago, I think, June 15th, that science is going under scrutiny. So really, this is the main thing. So that's all very nice. We need, this is the consistent message, we need to remove the obstacles to data access. But this is really easier said than done, and we need a lot of infrastructure around all this science to be able to communicate inambiguously the information. And for many scientists, really, this is the image, we are lost in a sea of standards, and this is a very lonely experience. So how, under the framework that we are working on, can we get help? This is something that we've been using in the project, the eTrix project, that you will hear more about in the presentation by David Anderson after me, has been the Biosharing Registry of Standards. So this is a repository cooperative action that lists a number of standardization initiatives, be it in the clinical domain or also molecular biology domains, standards that are produced by standard development bodies, so really well-structured organizations, but also academic grassroots work. And you will see information that is affecting terminologies, but also format and syntax. So really, the Biosharing Catalog has organized the information about these different vehicles and protocols for data exchange according to three specific, three axes basically, which gives you a bit of sense of direction and how you place your data in all this vast ocean of standards. So we have reporting guidelines that give you a kind of generic or general direction, idea of what you should be reporting, the best known arm Miami or in the microarray field and gene expression, but also consult in reporting of studies. When it comes to exchange format, just to give examples, this is what most biometricians are manipulating on a daily basis. We have SBML, for instance, but if you are doing multi-omic data set, we can use IS-Tab format, for instance. And then we have terminologies and ontologies, the most, you know, gene ontology for molecular notation, but also Snomed for all the medical dictionaries. We also have organized the knowledge about the standards by scope, so which allows you to have an idea of the popularity and the coverage of a particular initiative. And this is allow, this allows us to navigate, build a map, and identify the contact point because of course, different standardization initiatives exist, and sometimes it means working with them, it means facing those active zones of contact. And this is also where it indicates effort by the community that should be working at solving and making it easier, the interoperability of different standards. So to complement the Biosharing Registry of Standards, there is also another component, which is the BioDB Core aspect of things, which list, which is essentially a database of databases. And this is a very interesting implementation because then it allows you to see the popularity of gauge, the popularity of the standards as they are implemented in resources, as they are published through, for instance, NAR database journals, and the system is regularly updated accordingly. So placing this in context now, we've been working for about a year and a half now under the eTrix project, and these are the people of the team, working at trying to identify in the space of translational research which standards should be used and how they could be identified. So let's go back to translational research, and really, there are different types. This is what has been touched upon by Winn just in the previous presentation, I won't dwell too much, but there are two cases, basically, the one that looks at the translation from animal models to human models, and also the other bit that locates it here, that moves away from the bench to the bedside, basically. So these are the kind of elements that we need to deal with. So in terms of clinical data, we, this is well-established, there is the C-Disk HSL7 landmass, and these are well-documented, and this is the standard that will be prescribing under the eTrix network. But when it comes to non-clinical data and molecular phenotyping, then we have such as untargeted metabolite profiling or nucleotide sequencing for transcriptomics, then we have to look into things that are actually generated by the community of academics. And this is where the resources, such as the OBO resource for terminology, such as human phenotype ontology, the gene ontology, or the ontology for biomedical investigation, for instance, are becoming highly visible on the radar of anybody working in the field to really express in a very typed way and an ambiguous way this kind of molecular dimensions and the findings associated to that. And of course, one of the main tasks in translational area is really to work on the internal consistency, cross-domain consistency, and if possible, cross-study consistency. Because every time we have a transloading problem, this costs an expensive transform and extract information. So we try to really work at ironing out all the creases here. So IMI eTrix is a European project, which basically is meant to support a number of clinical research projects in Europe. These are the five projects that we are currently supporting: Ubiopride, Predict2B, Abirisk, Oncotrac, and RMAP, which are respectively looking at COPD syndrome, tuberculosis, antibody therapy, and risk associated to those. Number of Oncotrac looks at, as you have guessed, I guess, a number of cancer pathologies and remitoid arthritis. And eTrix is actually selected an open-source project, which is the Transmart set of tool, which has been released in the community by Johnson &amp; Johnson, and it's just available on GitHub. You will hear more about that very soon. So this is a kind of warehouse technology that allows you to load the data and run a number of analysis components, which can be uploaded and plugged in by a number of contributors. And under the framework that we are working in, we have three working groups: the Standardization Working Group, the Work Package 3, Talking to the Work Package 2, about software engineering, and the Data Curation Work Package, which actually is on the front line of obtaining the data from the submitters and dealing and forcing the standards that has been recommended by the Work Package 3 and which has been issuing specification to the development team. And the main work of Work Package 2, 3, has been in fact to deliver what we've called the eTrix Standard Setup Pack, which is meant to be a document that could be issued to all IMI project in Europe, working in the field, that would identify the key resources that data manager should be aware of and consider when organizing the data management plans. So we have covered a number of inclusion criteria, which are ranging from the coverage, obviously, the acceptance, the sustainability plans, and these have been metrics that we have considered and consulted over the community and interrogating the various repositories to get a feel for what the metrics were. The document is now released, is available from the eTrix website, it is available under CC BY CISA license, and we plan a release cycle of every six months because of course we need to keep the work up to date. This is a fast-moving field, new initiatives are cropping up fairly quickly. So this is the overall organization. We have split the various standards according to whether they're clinical, non-clinical. We have also a special branch on everything that is molecular phenotyping and the specific elements about terminologies. This table is just a quick look at partial recommendation for the omics data standards, so that's provide a quick overview. Division by the kind of measurement and technology that you use, you will be able to discover and use and detect a number of formats you should be aware of, and if you're not, then you should catch up. So these elements have been actually retrofitted in the Biosharing Catalog, so the collections, which allow you to again have another means to access this information. This is a very effective way to disseminate the information that we have been producing. So that's one aspect. The other aspect is that we need to translate that into actionable operational actions. So this is where the interaction with the Transmart team and the developers of the tool started, which means that we are starting enacting the specification of standard-compliant element, component into the Transmart element. This is Gustaf Klimt Tree of Life, and when it comes to Transmart, this translates into a master tree, that is essentially what Transmart knows as a kind of ontology. It's misleading to use the term ontology, but this is kind of organization of knowledge. And one of the major outcome that we will be building under eTrix is the creation of a C-Disk SDTM-based Transmart tree that will be delivered soon, good progress is underway. So the future directions, we will be, as I said, maintaining the documents and the information. We are starting interacting with the Transmart Foundation Ontology Working Group and diffusing the documents to the IMI for outreach and diffusion. In terms of implementation as well, we will be looking at improving Transmart search interface, possibly relying on the I2B2 qualifier code element that we will be leveraging for improving this data discovery into the tool. Looking forward, again, these are the different components that we will be focusing on, and the key important element will be training. Again, I think maybe that's something that we should highlight even more, is that with these data-intensive fields, we need to make sure that the knowledge about what is already available out there in the community, the various standards and terminologies are absolutely reaching the users and the data producers, so that I can establish data management plan of good quality. So in terms of standardization, this is, we are also looking at possibly implementation for the next generation of translational platforms. This is where we are talking about the eTrix customization system, that would be a lot more standard-aware, and that would be a component of data-driven annotation. And this is also where we would like to highlight a number of bridge-building activities that we would like, that we are currently performing, looking beyond Europe, but also looking at the US. This is through the number of NIH BD2K initiatives that have been in a way taken, and in which we are involved, such as SEDAR and BioCaddi, which looks at data discovery and data indexing. SEDAR is of particular interest because it's applying a number of techniques to do data-driven template generation and data acquisition. So again, this is relevant for the work in our domain to facilitate data acquisition and again, break some of the bottlenecks while maintaining data compliance and standard compliance. So I will hand it here, and these are the people I need to acknowledge for all the work in Oxford, Rolfman La Roche, Monsur Fabien, Ibrahim and Pail College, Dorina and Paul, C-Disk, and Van Kat, Serge, Adriano at the University of Luxembourg. And I will take any questions. Thank you.
Hi. Very nice talk. So I'm a bit of a disaffected standards user for a couple of reasons, which I hope you can address, and maybe the landscape has gotten better. So a couple of years ago, we were, so one problem I see with standards is that they always follow the data. Once a type of data is actually well-established, you get a good standard, such as Miami and so on. However, if I want to share my data that is rather new, we did systems biology interaction work in human microbiome, there was no way any database could, any of the standard databases at the time, Camera, ENA, and so on, would accept our data under any of the standards because most of the data would have been lost. So we just dumped it and data dried in the end because the standards could not capture the type of data that we had at the time. The other thing that I see, but I know, so a lot of, so that's one problem that I had. Another problem that I had is when we actually do generate data that is, you know, standard-compatible as it is, we kind of find it's extremely difficult to shoehorn or to cast the data into the standards, meaning the software that is out there to help us set up the data is, you know, we either have to script it ourselves, and sometimes that's quite a bit of work, or the software can't be used very well, even for stuff like MiGs, MiMs, and so on. Again, this is going back to the metagenomic, and that brings to the third thing, which is the standard seems to be like, there seems to be like a shifting landscape in some of the standards, especially in my field. So, you know, you one day have this one, and then it changes within a few months to something else. So these are like the three problems that I seriously have with standards. I love it, I think it's a good idea, that'll enable people to build upon, you know, work that we're generating, but somehow they're always seem, I seem to always hit one of those hurdles when I try to put, cast my data into this kind of standard-sharing form.
Right. But I think all these are valid point, and say, probably need an hour to answer and address some of the questions. But when it comes to the first one, which is the kind of adequacy of a standard for new technologies, I guess that's obviously a problem. You need to shoehorn. If there is nothing for your new technology, there are two problems. First, do you understand also the error model and the key problems in your data set to begin with, so that we can refine the model, the existing models, to address the key information that should be captured in your new data set? So extensions, can we be, can we identify patterns in the way standards are produced that can be exploited for your particular field? That would be, that would be one lesson. We try to do that with the MEB framework, for instance, which is now in Biosharing, which was an attempt to assemble all the people working in the minimum information checklist to see, can we identify modules, patterns? And what you described as well, we lived it with, through the kind of semi-success of major object model in microarray. So there are two reasons. First was that the, it addresses the second point, the absence of good tools to support the specification and the format that was issued. And that's, that's critical, and I think that's probably a problem for the funding agencies as well, to make sure that enough support is provided, not only for people developing standards, because this is a career path that is not necessarily recognized, but also to efficiently deliver, in a way, logistic support for delivery of tools that are standard-compliant. Because there is so often too long a lag between the moment the specifications are out and good tools are available. So I think I've just touched on two points that I.
Thanks.
Any more questions? If not, now the coffee break. We have two more talks, we will continue the session after the coffee break. We will resume in half an hour here. Thank you.[1313.41]
to 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 make sure that enough support is provided, not only for people developing standards, because this is a career path that is not necessarily recognized, but also to efficiently deliver, in a way, logistic support for delivery of tools that are standard compliant. Because there is so often too long a lag between the moment the specifications are out and good tools are available. So I think I've just touched on two points that I.
Thanks.
Any more questions? If not, now the coffee break. We have two more talks. We will continue the session after the coffee break. We we will resume in half an hour here. Thank you.
I can be your hero, baby. I can kiss away the pain. I will stand by you forever. You can take my breath away. I just wanna hold you. I just wanna hold you. Oh yeah. I'm lying too deep. Have I lost my mind? Well, I don't care. You're here tonight. I can be your hero, baby. I can kiss away the pain. Oh yeah. I will stand by you forever. You can take my breath away. I can be your hero. I can kiss away the pain. And I will stand by you forever. You can take my breath away. You can take my breath away. I can be your hero. Look at the stars. Look how they shine for you. And everything you do. Yeah, they were all yellow. I came along. I wrote a song for you. And all the things you do. And it was called Yellow. So then I took my turn. Oh, what a thing to have done. And it was all yellow. Your skin. Oh yeah, your skin and bones. Turn into something beautiful. And you know. You know I love you so. You know I love you so. I swam across. I jumped across for you. Oh, what a thing to do. Cause you were all yellow. I drew a line. I drew a line for you. Oh, what a thing to do. And it was all yellow. Your skin. Oh yeah, your skin and bones. Turn into something beautiful. And you know. For you, I bleed myself dry. For you, I bleed myself dry. It's you. Look how they shine for 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 you. Look how they shine. Look at the stars. Look how they shine for you. And all the things that you do.
All my girls at the party, look at that body shaking that thing like you never did see. Got a nice package, alright. Cause I'm gonna have to ride it tonight. All my girls at the party, look at that body shaking that thing like you never did see. Got a nice package, alright.
Edit.
Four, three, two, one.
All my girls at the party, look at that body shaking that thing like you never did see. Got a nice package, alright. It's all for you. All my girls at the party, look at that body shaking that thing like you never did see. Got a nice package, alright. It's all for you. All my girls at the party, look at that body shaking that thing like you never did see. Got a nice package, alright. Cause I'm gonna have to ride it tonight. All my girls at the party, look at that body shaking that thing like you never did see. Got a nice package, alright. Cause I'm gonna have to ride it tonight. All my girls at the party, look at that body shaking that thing like you never did see. Got a nice package, alright. Cause I'm gonna have to ride it tonight. All my girls at the party, look at that body shaking that thing like you never did see. Got a nice package, alright. Cause I'm gonna have to ride it tonight. All my girls at the party, look at that body shaking that thing like you never did see. Got a nice package, alright. Cause I'm gonna have to ride it tonight. All my girls at the party, look at that body shaking that thing like you never did see.
I don't know what I'm doing. See, baby, I apologize for all the things that I've done that I've done. See, I know that I've been a fool for far too long. Baby, you don't have to go run away. Just come back to Papa, please, baby. If you want to stay, if you really love me, then why are you leaving me? I can't think, think about this crazy day. I lose sleep just today dreaming about you, baby. I'm going crazy, 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 just thinking about you lately. Crazy, baby. I'm going crazy, 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 just thinking about you, baby. I don't want to do no more. Thinking about you. Crazy, 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 yeah. Crazy, crazy. I'm knocking you. Crazy, crazy. I'm going crazy. Crazy, crazy. When I can't see you again. Say I'm going crazy, baby, 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 baby. Say I'm going crazy. Finally realize that you're my true love. And I had a lot of time to think. And you're all I seem to get think, to keep thinking of, yeah. And now I know I need you, need you every day. I can't live without you. So don't run away, baby. It's sad that you love me. So why are you leaving me? Why, 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 why? Think about this crazy day, baby. Why are you leaving? I lose sleep just today. Baby, why don't you tell? I'm going crazy. I'm going crazy, 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 just thinking about you lately. Just a day. I'm going crazy, 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 just thinking about you, baby. I'm going crazy. I'm going crazy. Thinking about you lately. Do you, do you, do you? Crazy, crazy. When I can't touch you. I'm going crazy, 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 crazy. When I can't hold you. I'm going crazy. When I can't see you again. If I can see you, if I can see you, if I can see you, if I can see you again, then I would go. If I can see you again, I'd go crazy.
Never made it as a wise man. I couldn't cut it as a poor man stealing. Tired of living like a blind man. I'm sick of sight without a sense of feeling. And this is how you remind me. This is how you remind me of what I really am. This is how you remind me of what I really am. It's not like you say sorry. Of course, we know that different story. This time I'm mistaken. Forehand and you are hard worth breaking. And I've been wrong. I've been down, been to the bottom of every bottle. These five words in my head scream, "Are we having fun yet?" Yeah, 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 yeah. Now we're, yeah, 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 now we're. It's not like I didn't know that. I said I love you and I swear I still do. And it must have been so bad. Cause living with me must have damn near killed you. And this is how you remind me of what I really am. This is how you remind me of what I really am. It's not like you say sorry. Of course, we know that different story. This time I'm mistaken. Forehand and you are hard worth breaking. And I've been wrong. I've been down, been to the bottom of every bottle. These five words in my head scream, "Are we having fun yet?" Yeah, 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 yeah. Now we're, yeah, 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 now we're. Yeah, 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 now we're. Yeah, 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 now we're. Never made it as a wise man. I couldn't cut it as a poor man stealing. And this is how you remind me. This is how you remind me. This is how you remind me of what I really am. This is how you remind me of what I really am. It's not like you say sorry. Of course, we know that different story. This time I'm mistaken. Forehand and you are hard worth breaking. And I've been wrong. I've been down, been to the bottom of every bottle. These five words in my head scream, "Are we having fun yet?" Yeah, yeah, yeah. Are we having fun yet? Yeah, yeah. Are we having fun yet? Yeah, yeah. Are we having fun yet? Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, this one right here goes out to all the babies' mamas, mamas. Mamas, mamas. Baby mamas, mamas. Yeah, go like this.
I'm sorry, Miss Jackson. Ooh, I am for real. Never meant to make your daughter cry. I apologize a trillion times. I'm sorry, Miss Jackson. Ooh, I am for real. Never meant to make your daughter cry. I apologize a trillion times. My baby is drama, mama. Don't like me. She doing things like having the boys from her neighborhood to the studio trying to fight me. She need to get a piece of American pie and take her bite out. That's my house. I disconnect the cable and turn the lights out. Let her know her grandchild is a baby and not a paycheck. Private school, daycare, shit, medical bills, I pay them. I love your mom and everything. See, I ain't the only one who lay down. She wanna rip you up and start a custody war, my lawyer, stay down. She never got a chance to hear my side of the story, we was divided. She had fish fries, cookouts for my child birthday, I ain't invited, despite it. I show her the utmost respect when I fall through. All you do is defend that lady when I call you. I'm sorry, Miss Jackson. Ooh, I am for real. Never meant to make your daughter cry. I apologize a trillion times. I'm sorry, Miss Jackson. Ooh, I am for real. Never meant to make your daughter cry. I apologize a trillion times. Me and your daughter got special things going on. You say it's puppy love. We say it's foreground. Hope that we feel this, feel this way forever. You can plan a pretty picnic, but you can't predict the weather. Miss Jackson. Ten times out of nine, now if I'm lying, fine. The quickest puzzle, throw it on my mouth and I'll decline. King meets queen, then the puppy love theme, together dream about that crib with the good year year swing. On the oak tree, I hope we feel like this forever, forever, forever ever, forever ever. Forever never seems that long until you're grown. And notice that the day by day ruler can't be too wrong. Miss Jackson, my intentions were good. I wish I could become a magician to Abracadabra off the sadder. Thoughts of me, thoughts of she, thoughts of he, asking what happened to the feeling that her and me had. I pray so much about it, need some kneepads. It happened for a reason, one can't be mad. So though this note that everything's cool. And yes, I will be present on the first day of school and graduation. I'm sorry, Miss Jackson. Ooh, I am for real. Never meant to make your daughter cry. I apologize a trillion times. I'm sorry, Miss Jackson. Ooh, I am for real. Never meant to make your daughter cry. I apologize a trillion times. Look at the way he treats me. She look at the way you treat me. You skillin' those ass long girls, you got your ass in up the creek, G. Without a pattern, you left the straddling, ride this thing on out. And the union girl ain't speaking no more, cause my dick all in, I'm out. I'm talking my jealousy, infidelity, envy, cheating, beating, Indian to the G, they be the same thing. Who you placing the blame on? You keep on singing that same song, let bygone be bygone. You can go and get the hell on, you and your mom. I'm sorry, Miss Jackson. Ooh, I am for real. Never meant to make your daughter cry. I apologize a trillion times. I'm sorry, Miss Jackson. Ooh, I am for real. Never meant to make your daughter cry. I apologize a trillion times. I'm sorry, Miss Jackson. Ooh, I am for real. Never meant to make your daughter cry. I apologize a trillion times. I'm sorry, Miss Jackson. Ooh, I am for real. Never meant to make your daughter cry. I apologize a trillion times.